Good evening and thank you for joining the Boulder Chambers College of Political Knowledge. I'm Lori Call, the Boulder Chambers Senior Director of Policy Programs. At the Boulder Chamber, we believe that elections are the cornerstone of our democracy. We therefore advocate for broad civic participation as part of our mission. For more than 20 years, the Boulder Chambers College of Political Knowledge has served as a launching pad for successful campaigns. Our illustrious alumni represent many levels of government, including local and statewide leaders, and you'll hear from some of them tonight. We welcome you to this official kickoff of the election season where you'll have the opportunity to learn from the experts. I'd like to note that while the Boulder Chamber is quite engaged during the election season, we provide information to educate our members and we take positions on key ballot measures that are affect our economy, but we don't endorse candidates. We collaborate with all members of City Council and other levels of government partnering with those who are elected to serve our community. As part of our election season, we do plan the following activities. We'll be producing materials that discuss the candidates' positions on key issues. We'll also compile a list of endorsements and mark your calendars for August 25th, when we'll host our City Council Candidate Forum. Some of you have participated in the past. You can find all this information in the coming months on the Boulder Chambers website, boulderchamber.com. If you have questions throughout the event, please note them in the chat function. We'll be monitoring this and address questions throughout the evening, or you can use the raise hand function and we'll call on you as time permits. I want to note that if people are adding comments to the chat that are inappropriate, we will be monitoring and addressing them accordingly. And to ensure focus on our speakers, we ask that attendees stay muted unless they're asking questions. We have a packed agenda tonight, so therefore turn the program to my colleague Andrea Menegal, our Boulder Chambers Public Affairs Director, to introduce speakers and facilitate the Q and A session. Andrea?
All right, thank you Lori. I am Andrea Menegal, Public Affairs Director at the Boulder Chamber, and we have an exciting agenda for you tonight. You're going to hear from folks and experts about the rules and regulations for running for council, whether it's a ballot initiative that you're running or a council campaign that you're running, how to strategically structure that campaign in order to be successful, and the process for building support and seeking endorsements, as well as we'll be hearing from two individuals that will be completing our program with tonight, who are in fact the top two vote getters in the last City Council election, to tell you how they did it and what it's like once you actually get the job. So let's go ahead and get started. First off, there's a lot to know about the rules and the regulations running a campaign, whether it's a ballot issue or a council candidate campaign. And we're fortunate to have our City Clerk's Office here tonight. We have our Boulder City Clerk, Alicia Johnson, here with her team. It includes Diane Marshall, who if you run for City Council, you'll get to know extremely well because you'll be asking Diane questions all day, every day, about what you need to do, what you need to submit, all the rules and regulations that exist. And Diane's been great to provide that information. And also along with them, from the City Attorney's Office is Luis Toro. So we have a tight agenda here tonight, like Lori said. Submit your questions in the chat function as we go. We'll ask for those if we have time at the end of the presentation. We can ask them from you. You can ask them yourselves through the raise hand function. And if we run out of time, Diane and Alicia and Luis are ready to put their contact information up on the screen, so you can always follow up with them afterwards. But thanks for being here, everyone. And right now, I will turn it over to Alicia, Diane, and Luis to present all the rules, regulations, and details that are important to know for a campaign. I believe Diane, you will be sharing your screen.
All right, that could be it. Oh, there's the shared screen. Okay, I can do this. That is not my screen.
I think it is. We're seeing the PowerPoint, Diane.
You are seeing the PowerPoint.
Yep.
Okay.
You just have to hit the little presentation icon in the bottom right.
Okay. I had something in front of it. No, is that working now?
You want to probably turn on the slide presentation. There's a little icon at the bottom, on the right-hand side, a little bit higher up. No, wrong one.
Wrong one, all right.
Yeah, looks like a little diamond. Looks like a little diamond in the PowerPoint, right there.
How'd that do?
Nothing yet. Or you can hit your F5. F5 will work too.
There we go. All right.
Okay.
Marshall, with the City Clerk's Office, I'm the Elections Administrator, and we're going to talk about how to run for City Council, what do you do, and in what order. Here's our contact information. We're not going to go through this right now because it is a brief time, but just know you can reach out to the City Clerk or myself, and our election website is at boldercolorado.gov/elections. So are you qualified to run? Well, to become a candidate, you have to be a registered elector of the city of Boulder residing within the city limits. You have to turn 21 by the time of the election. That's November 2nd of this year. You have to be a resident of the city for at least one year prior to the election, and you're not eligible to run for office if you previously have been elected to three or more terms. You're going to come in in a particular time period. Domination petition period is August 3rd through August 23rd. You're going to sign up a particular form with us. We're going to check your voter registration, and your petition is then ready to receive signatures. Minimum of 25 are needed, maximum of 35. They all must be registered voters residing within the city limits of the city of Boulder. We're going to validate those register, the voter registration on those signers. And when that verification is complete, the City Clerk will declare your petition sufficient or insufficient, and hopefully you'll be on the ballot for November 2nd. So you're certified. What's going to happen? Well, a lot and fast. So come to the training sessions in July. We have three things you have to do. You need to request your username and password so you can access our voter system. And to do that, you send an email to City Clerk's Office at bouldercolorado.gov. You give me the name of your committee and the email you want to use. The system will spit out a username and password and will send that back to you. Once you get that, you can log in, and the first form to fill out is the Statement of Organization. That's going to give us who your committee members are. So your treasurer is, you must have a treasurer, so make sure you, it can be the candidate. You don't have to have a large committee, but if you do have officers, list them and their information that we asked for, address and such. Next, you're going to file a contributions and expenditure statement, and that's going to be for any contributions you've made or received, and any expenditures you've made up to the point of filing this report. You got to get everything in. So if you received, if you made an expenditure that created a contribution on May 25th, that means you need to make sure that that's in your report. It must include everything that's happened. There's nothing about the elections that does not need to be reported. There's no expense too small. On September, by September 10th, you're going to need to file your financial interest disclosure form, and we have instructions in the guidelines for that. Early September, Channel 8 is going to want you to come in on particular dates and make a three-minute film where you state your candidate position. These will rotate alphabetically A to Z and then Z to A on Channel 8 throughout the election season, probably starting in late September and going through Election Day. You'll also have another thing to do right away after your certification period ends. Boulder County is going to reach out, and they're going to want you to record your name. So you'll be calling into a particular phone number. You'll say Mary Smith, and that's going to go into their auditory election equipment for people to make access to. I just posted the 2021 Election Guides. You'll find them at our website, colorado.bouldercolorado.gov/elections, and it includes all the dollar amounts for matching funds. It includes the dates for filings. All the dates throughout the election season are there. Contribution limits. Official candidates are limited to contributions of $100 total per person. So if it's a combination of a monetary contribution, an in-kind contribution, a loan, no more than $100 per person. This means someone cannot go out and pick up $600 worth of flyers for you because they've just made a contribution using that charge card. So that violates the campaign finance rules. You need to give them the debit card that's associated with your candidate account. Official, unofficial candidate committees also come under this $100 contribution limit. Matching funds. We have a terrific matching funds program. Expenditure limit this year is $21,732. You first have to qualify, and once you qualify, we begin matching contributions up to $100 if they are monetary. So anything that's a loan in kind or more than $100 from the candidate, then we don't match that particular money. We will match up to $10,866 this year. But if you want matching funds, you can only accept contributions from a natural person, meaning a human being. So Mary Smith LLC, nope. ABC Sign Company, nope, not if you want matching funds. Mary Smith herself personally can contribute to you. Keep that in mind. Anonymous contributions. Official candidate committees can't use them. So if you receive an anonymous contribution, you report it as anonymous. There's a way to do this in the system, and then you have to give the money away. So you're going to reach out to me because I'm going to tell you how you need to do it. If you're getting matching funds, you do it a particular way, and if you're not getting matching funds, you do it another way. So check on how you do things prior to doing them. Disclosure. Don't buy anything until you know the name of your committee because you don't want to change the name of your committee and gone out and purchased a bunch of election buttons and don't have paid for by Mary Smith for City Council. Everything that you have must have a disclosure on it, paid for by. Solicitation for candidates. If you're soliciting funds, that's an additional step you have to take. So on your website, you'll probably have PayPal or some similar program. Make sure that you put, if it's the official candidate committee, authorized by Mary Smith for City Council. If it is not, if it is an unofficial candidate committee, they have to put not authorized by any candidate or committee. And you can always check with us. Just send in an email, give me a call. I'm very glad to stop and help you through that process. What are the terms of office and what are you going to get paid? So people do want to know these things. There's five open seats. The top four vote getters will get four-year terms. The fifth candidate is going to receive a two-year term. Council members are compensated $239.40 per meeting, not to exceed 52 meetings in a year, and that amount does have a cost of living increase to it. You're also eligible since 2024 medical benefits. You've gotten elected. Now what are you going to do? Well, a lot. There's, keep, just keep November for us. You're ours. We're going to have onboarding where you're going to gather in a room. If COVID allows us to do that, IT is going to come in and talk about, you know, do you need a Dell computer or do you need a iPhone? Do, Human Resources is going to come in and have your W2s, and they're going to want to know if you want health benefits, and you'll fill the paperwork out right there. IT will also help to make sure that you hook up. We'll get business cards for you, name badges, signs, that sort of thing. Your first big date, November 16th. You're going to be sworn in at 10:00 AM at a brief meeting. Council pitches follow that. Group pictures and individual. Council lunch, and 6:00 PM will be your first business meeting as the new council. The former council members will not be there at that particular meeting. Prepare for annual retreat sometime in January. The council agenda committee will set the schedule for 2022, probably sometime in October, and we'll make sure any candidates running will get that information so that they can reserve that date. Your business meetings are the first and third Tuesdays of the month. Your study sessions are the second and fourth. Generally, there's no meeting on the fifth Tuesday of the month. We're going to hold two training sessions for the candidates and treasurers of any type of committees. Both will be at the municipal building. This is all subject to how COVID is going to impact us and what we have to do. If things aren't good, then we'll have to do something virtual, but right now, we're planning on having it in person. 5:30 to 7:00, July 15th and July 29th. And here's my information again for contacting me to reach out for any information. And that's what we wanted to tell you for tonight. Wondered if you had any questions that we could answer. And please make sure that you come to the training sessions.
All right, thank you Diane. That was a lot of info and we rolled right through it, so that was great. We'll go ahead and if you could stop sharing your screens so we can see everybody. We will take those slides and post them on our website with the video to this event so they're available to everybody. And then, of course, you have their contact information that you can follow up with them. But I see one hand raised. Lisa Dilling, do you have a question for the City Clerk's Office?
Just a quick question. Thanks so much for that presentation. Can you say about the $100 part? Is that meaning that people can't contribute more than $100 each to the campaign, or is that something else?
Absolutely. There is a $100 limit, and they cannot contribute $101. So it's that.
Yourself, like as the candidate, if you, like if I were running, I couldn't do more than $100 myself?
No, that's a very good question, Lisa, because you can. The candidate is the only person who can contribute more money than anyone else. Now, if you want matching funds, it can't be more than 20% of the expenditure limit, and that's a little over $4,000. So I'm glad you brought that up because if you're buying stuff in anticipation of becoming a candidate, you don't want to spend so much money that you disqualify yourself for matching funds.
Oh, super. Thank you.
All right, any other questions? Yeah, Gala, nice to see you here.
Hi guys. Diane, on that point about the $100 limit, if you're not going after matching funds, people still can't contribute more than 100?
Gala, nice to see you, and that is correct. You cannot, the candidates cannot accept whether they're receiving matching funds or not, more than $100 per person. And also, the unofficial candidate committees cannot accept more than $100 per person. And remember, that person thing is limited to just a natural person for people receiving matching funds. So if you're a candidate, you're not receiving matching funds, you could accept money from ABC Sign Company up to $100.
Looks like we have a question from Brooke Harrison, and then after Brooke, Marilyn Sue. Brooke?
Another question. When you keep, when you mention qualifying for matching funds, what does it take to qualify?
Yeah, it takes raising 10% of the expenditure limit, so a little over $2,000 in a particular fashion. And so we'll really go into this at the July trainings, but if somebody gives you $100, only 25 of it goes towards qualifying. But once you qualify, Brooke, the whole $100 will be matched by the city. You'll sign a contract with us, and then boom, we're going to start matching all the money. If somebody gives you $10, then $10 will go towards matching fund qualification because that's under $25, $25 or under. If somebody gives you $75, 50 of it goes towards qualification. So it's a two-step process. First, you qualify, and when you see the form, it lays out beautifully, and you'll see how this actually works out, and we'll do the process.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Marilyn?
Thank you so much. Are these rules subject to change frequently? Or are they kind of not set in stone, but you know?
Well, Marilyn, they're not set in stone. We did have a rewrite of the, by the Election Working Group of the code in 2019. And so we have had some changes. For the most part, though, they don't change very much. And one of the big changes in 2019 was that if you want matching funds, you accept them only from a natural person. And so the Boulder Revised Code Title 13 is about elections, and that's part of the guidelines. So you'll be able to, it's, I think it's about 16 pages long, so it's not a big, long read. And that includes everything, how to run the election, and also about all the different types of committees. So they're not going to change the degree now in election.
Yeah, and also Diane, I just wanted to throw in that also some of this is in the charter, so that's really not going to change. The things about how to qualify to be a council candidate are in the charter. So that stuff can't really change without an election, and then the ordinance that Diane referenced is more about the nitty-gritty of how the matching funds work and disclosure and all that good stuff.
All right, any more questions? Yeah, Gala, another one?
Hi. What information do you need to prove a natural person besides their first and last name?
You need their first and last name and their residence.
Their address.
Yeah, yeah. We are not, we are not checking that each person is a natural person. What we're looking for is to see if any companies applied, made a contribution. But if somebody does know that Mary Smith actually wrote that check on Mary Smith LLC and makes a complaint, then we're going to follow through. That will be a violation of the Boulder Revised Code. So you need to, you checks, you'll see the check. And if it's an LLC, if it's an entity of some sort, you would probably see it on the check.
So you just need their address, their first and last name, and their full address, including there's a.
Yep, so there's the date that they contributed, the amount, total to date, their name, and their address.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. And by the way, the form won't let you complete that without filling in all that information.
Thank you for that information, Diane. As always, when we hold this event, jam-packed with a lot of useful information to get out there early so that people are aware. And as always, we'll go ahead and continue to provide a connection to Diane, Alicia, Luis, so you can get your questions answered. We'll go ahead and post these slides along with the video of this that you can share with anybody you know that is interested in running that can be here tonight. So with that being said, there are all the rules, but to run a campaign effectively, you really need to use some strategy. And tonight, we're fortunate to have one of Boulder's most experienced campaign managers with us to let us know all the things you probably don't know and don't want to find out on your own. But she'll tell you tonight. That's Angelique Espinoza. So Angelique, we turn it over to you to let us know what's the best way to put a campaign together.
Thank you, Andrea. Thanks so much, and thank you all for being here. You are taking your first step on an exciting journey, and I wish you all the best of luck. So I have compiled my top 10 tips for a successful campaign. Hence the background. If you're old enough, you'll know what that means. All right, so number 10, follow the rules. Remember everything Diane told you, and if you forget, give her a call. Make sure you find an accurate, detail-oriented treasurer who will always file on time. So Diane mentioned that it can be you, and certainly according to the rules, it can be you, but I would not advise that you be your own treasurer because your time is going to be better spent doing other things. So number 10, follow the rules. All right. Number nine, don't go it alone. Convene your kitchen cabinet, which is a group of folks who think that you'd be a great public official, and they're willing to meet with you and give you advice and help you out as you start on your journey. Meet early and often, and let them help you. Again, you want to spend your time doing the things that only the candidate can do, and you want your kitchen cabinet to be able to help you out with the things that they can. So don't go it alone. Number eight, show me the money. Find someone who can keep you accountable for your call time because, yes, you have to raise money. You have to raise money to get your message out in front of voters with direct mail, digital, and print ads. Those are the main things that cost money. You can spend it on yard signs and palm cards that you might want to pass out when you go door-to-door. And all of these things do cost money, and you might even want to pay a campaign manager. So make a list of everyone you have ever known in your life, seriously, and call them. And then, when you've called through everyone you have ever known, ask your elected friends to call through their lists with you. And if you're lucky, you will raise the money that you want to do the campaign that you want to do. So I'm not going to answer the question of whether you should accept matching funds or not because I can't say that I really know. It's been a long time since I ran for council, and I think the political calculus on that changes from year to year. So I'd say consult with your kitchen cabinet on whether they think that's a good idea. So number eight, show me the money. Number seven, be the candidate, and nothing else. Find a good treasurer, see number 10, and find a good, experienced campaign manager. You might even want to pay them, see number eight. And then, listen to them. Your job is to do what your campaign manager tells you to do. So you show up where they tell you to show up. You give the speech that they, that you've worked on together. You don't try, you don't spend your time building the website, as fun as that might be, or managing the social media, as fun as that might be, or anything like that. You are the candidate, and you spend all your time doing the things that only the candidate can do. So be the candidate. Number six, plan your work. Work your plan. Outline a strategy with your kitchen cabinet and set a punch list of things to do. So see number nine with your kitchen cabinet. Do not get distracted with other people's helpful suggestions. Everyone you know will think they know what you need to do to win, and unless they are your very own experienced campaign manager, they don't know. You don't want to get pulled in a bunch of different directions. So don't also get distracted by what other candidates are doing. They have their own strategies, and if you get thrown off course by just reacting to them, you're not going to get your message out. So number six, plan your work and work your plan. Number five, practice, practice, practice. Write your stump speech and learn to deliver it by heart. Practice in the mirror. Practice with your dog, cat, bird, partner, housemate, whatever. And practice with your kitchen cabinet. Practice to the point that you stay on message, no matter what. Because you might get bored of it, but in order to actually get your message out to voters, you have to say the same thing over and over and over and over again. And when you start to hear it come back to you, you'll know that you've just begun to reach the voters with your message. By the time you get to the end of the campaign, you will be able to deliver the stump speeches of all the candidates you are running with, and they will be able to deliver yours. That is your goal. So stay on message. Practice, practice, practice. Number four, we're getting there.
Angelique, you just went on mute.
Something bad will happen. It won't be what you expect. Don't give it legs. Meaning, don't spend so much time trying to defend yourself from somebody's accusation that you just make the story bigger and stretch out longer. If you can possibly ignore it, ignore it. If you have to respond to it, try to respond in the way that shuts it down as quickly as possible. So be ready for anything. Number three, get endorsements. Get on a slate with one of the big Boulder organizations. You just can't get on the voters' radar without that. It may not be the thing you want to do. It may be the thing that's your first thought, but you really. but you really don't have a realistic chance of winning, in my experience, unless you get on a slate with one of the big organizations. Ask community leaders, elected officials, and regular folks to endorse you, and put their endorsements on your website, and choose the ones that you want to put in your written materials. Try for the newspaper endorsements, they're not always predictive, but again, they're another way to get your message and your name out in front of voters. So number three, get endorsements. Number two, knock on doors. This is the only way that you're going to actually find out what actual voters actually think. It will help you, it will help you refine your message, and it will make you a better public servant if you win that office. Plus, showing up at someone's door, socially distancing, you used to be able to shake their hand, but actually being in-person with voters, it has the highest return rate on converting voters. So the standard is, they say you have to touch a voter seven times to convert them to a vote. And some of those touches have a higher rate of return than others. In-person is the very highest. After that, there's calls, mail, ads, and other stuff. So it sounds scary, but it's actually one of the most fun things about a campaign. So just do what you have to do to get yourself to the first door, and you'll be okay for the rest of the time. So number two, knock on doors. And the number one top tip for a successful campaign is, don't mess it up. In my experience, you have to be the right candidate or the right issue at the right moment. If you're not, you're not going to win. And you can run the best campaign you want, but you can't make it be the right time for what the message is that you're carrying. Voters have important, they have feelings, and they have priorities that change over time. It depends on what's happening in the culture overall. If you're not the right candidate at the right time, you're not going to win. But you will have had an amazing experience. But if you are the right candidate at the right time, and you don't mess it up, then you will win. So don't get in your own way. Follow the rules, plan your work, work your plan, stay on message, be the candidate, nothing else, and don't mess it up. And in my experience, that is the way to win a successful campaign. If at first you don't succeed, try, try again. A lot of people who had long careers on council did not win the first or the second time that they ran. So whatever happens, you're going to have an amazing experience, you're going to learn so much. And you can always, you can always get out there again. You will have a head start because people will already have heard your message and seen your name. So number one top tip, don't mess it up.
Thank you, Angelique, that was awesome. And so everyone remember, rule number one, don't mess it up. And rule number five, something will go wrong. So however you balance those two things, that will be to be determined. We do have a few minutes for questions for Angelique, if there are some out there. If you want to raise hand function to show that you have a question, that would be great. And that can be found in your reactions button. All right, let's go back to the group screen. I'm not seeing any Angelique, but that was awesome.
No.
I think you did, I think you nailed it. And in fact, I think it was number three, if I wrote those down correctly, get endorsements is the perfect segue into our next speaker, which is the Daily Camera. When you are out there to get endorsements, to look for support, there's going to be organizations all over town that will be looking to learn more about the candidates and what you care about, like Angelique said. Some of these organizations will be publishing, putting out, and publicizing their endorsements. Those have a huge impact, as Angelique noted. And one of the most visible platforms and one of the most notable endorsements are the ones made by the Daily Camera. So with that, tonight, we're lucky to have their publisher, Al Manzi here, and their opinions page editor, Julie Marshall, that can describe how they go about that process. And then, they have some slides to show you the products that they offer for advertising and using the Daily Camera's platforms to get your campaign noticed. So with that, we'll turn it over to Al and Julie.
Terrific, thanks so much, Angelique. It was, it was great hearing you do that, and I remember, I remember your candidacy, and it was fun. You know, it's, we're very fortunate tonight, we have Julie Marshall. She's our opinion page editor, and she's actually going to take you through the endorsement process. She's been, she's a longtime camera employee, left for a number of years and came back recently as our opinions page editor, and has been doing a marvelous job. And I'm going to turn it over to her and let her tell you a little bit about the process that we follow for our endorsements. Julie?
Oops, hi. I wonder why my phone is on, sorry. Oh, there we go, can you see me now? Okay. Hi, it's so great to be here. Um, I, so first thing I wanted to talk about is pre-endorsement questionnaires. We will send out to the candidates, pre-endorsement questionnaires. Topics will be pretty much news that is going on, you know, the big, big issues, affordable housing, transportation, and so forth. And you'll fill those out and then send them in to us. And then you will have individual interviews with our editorial board. There'll be about three to five people there asking questions. And sometimes we invite some members from our community editorial board as well. And the interviews last about 30 minutes. And the really important part is to bring us really good snacks because we really appreciate that. Just kidding. And then, yeah, and then just, you know, I think that, from my experience, the interviews that are most, that stand out and are most enjoyable are when people come in, and you're just yourself, you don't say what you think we want to hear. We like creative, new thoughts and ideas that really perks us up and gets us excited. Yeah, just be yourself, be your individual self. And in terms of wanting our endorsement, I would just say, yeah, what Angelique said. You know, we've been around for 130 years. I really feel like, you know, we're the one that you want to get, so. And then, real quickly, well, actually, I don't need to go over letters unless people, and endorsement letters and guest opinions, unless afterwards you guys have questions, I'm happy to go over those, but those are kind of farther down the line, so I'll pass it over to Al now.
And Julie, you know, the endorsement, the endorsement meetings will happen in September, and we will, we will publish them not only in the newspaper, but in our recap, in our election guide as well, which is kind of, kind of the local bible of all the election coverage that we will do during the season. And so, so it is, it is a fun process, and you shouldn't be nervous about it. It's a very relaxed setting, and some people who have been through it can tell you that, that that's true. The next thing I wanted to talk about, and Andreas, if you could put up the slides, I, what I want you to know about is, is really, we're going to provide you with information that you, that you can use to make your determinations on how you're going to get your messaging out. The Daily Camera is a full-service print and digital agency. We handle not only print advertising, which you're more used to, all of the digital advertising, mobile, social, search, video, email, direct mail. We have a full direct mail house and website development. Our websites are very inexpensive. And I always tell people that probably the most important thing is top-of-mind awareness, getting people to, to know who you are and what your messaging is. And you can do that really effectively. Our reach is outstanding, I'm not going to go through all of those, all of those points individually because you can read them. But what's, what the things that are important to know is, you'll have two good people, not good people, great people, Jeanine Fritz and Billy McGrini. They've been doing, they've been working, both of them for our company for many, many years. They've been through many, many elections, they know the ins and outs of it. They can really help you develop what you should, what you should spend and on what. Our ability to target specific audiences is second to none because of the intensity and the technologies that we have for doing that, whether it be through email, direct mail, search, social, mobile, or even targeted banner advertising as well. But all of the campaigns must be paid in advance, so you need to know that, that there are no deals. You can't say, well, we're going to come in and we're going to spend X number of dollars, so we want a special deal. Everybody gets the same rates, and really, that's what you want. So everything's paid in advance, there are no deals. Our products are many. The most important one, obviously, is the camera, and then all of your digital capabilities within it, and the Colorado Daily, which is another publication in the primary market around the city. So that's another add-on publication that helps you get your top-of-mind awareness at a level that it needs to be in order to get elected. So all that, all of that information is going to be available to you. And I encourage you to get in contact with us early. A lot of times, what happens is people, people think, well, I don't know if I really want to do that, and I don't want to spend any money, and, you know, and they'll come in really late, and they'll see their competitors, you know, in the products or online, and they're, and they're wondering, well, how do I do this now? Come in early, find out about it. There's, we don't charge anything for you to just learn and get educated about how to spend your money effectively. And we're going to help you do that. Our job isn't, isn't to stuff the money in our pocket, it's to figure out how to make your campaign as effective as it possibly can be, because that, at the end of the day, is our payoff. So I will stop there and allow you to ask any questions of Julie. You know, Julie mentioned letters, they're very important. We have a timetable when, when we do end endorsement letters from individuals in the community, guest opinions. They're very vibrant pages, they're highly read, whether they be digitally or in print. So you get a lot of attention through those, so I always encourage people, if you've got people endorsing you, to make sure you get those sent in as well. So I'll stop there and, and answer any questions that you might have. Ask away.
No questions. All right, everybody, we'll go back to the gallery view. And if you are still on the spotlighted speaker, the gallery view is the immediate upper right-hand of your Zoom screen, so you can see everybody. Do you have any questions for the folks at the Daily Camera, either Al Manzi or Julie Marshall, on anything during the election season? How to get op-eds in there, how to get letters to the editor, how to get your messages across? More about their endorsement process, it is a pretty significant endorsement to get. So this is your chance to ask if you're thinking of running.
I would add to that, it's important to read the rules about submissions of guest editorials or endorsement letters, or letters to the editor, so that you, so that they can, they can be processed quickly. If they're too long, they're not going to get in, and if they don't meet the specifications, they won't get in.
All right, somebody mentioned Gala, I can't see your camera, but did you have a raise hand? Did you raise your hand for a question?
Yes, I did. With the Daily Camera, what's the price range? I just wanted to know the range for putting things up there, promoting myself, what is the range?
Well, that's why, that's why I suggested that you sit down with our experts, because, because that's like asking, how much does a car cost, right? I mean, it can be, you can buy a $100 car, you could buy a $200,000 car. So I would say most campaign people in the, in the city campaign areas have spent between $1,200 and probably $5,000, depending. We've had some people that spent more than that, but, but you can do a decent job with, with, with something in that range. And again, and you want to sit down and figure out what's your timeframe, how well you know the, what you're messaging. And once you have that, then we can sit down and identify, well, what are the, who are your key target groups? Do you have a specific weakness, do you have a specific strength? And we can help you make your determinations at that point.
So $1,200, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, that's going to be just a rough number. I mean, it'll, it'll depend upon how you want to, how you want to approach it. Like, do you want, some people want big ads in the election section, and that's all I want, okay? They're going to be a little more expensive, and they're just going to be targeted to the election section. But if you said, hey, I want to have a one-by-one or a two-by-two in your paper five days a week, because I just want people to remember my name. Well, there's people that have done that. So it just depends on what your desire is and what you think your strength is or your weakness, and how you, how you plan on attacking it, we can help you with that.
All right, the next question we have, Al, is from somebody who I think is familiar with advertising their campaign, and that would be Ed Byrne, Ed.
Good afternoon, everybody, it's nice to have anyone here. I can, I'm proud to say that in 1996, we had the first College of Political Knowledge at the Chamber. I heard mention of slates, and I thought it would be interesting for those who may not have been through this process before to find out who they might be and how they make their choices, and what the timing is for those slates. How do you reach out to the groups that might be putting one slates together? I'm not a big fan, just so you know, on the record.
And you know what, Al, we can save that question for both our next two speakers, Bobby Yates and Junie Joseph, who end up on those slates.
Yeah, they're definitely for them.
You don't want to do that, Al?
Well, I don't, I don't know, I don't know how to answer it, Ed. You know, I mean, certainly, certainly slates can also, groups of, groups of, or an endorsement group or a slate, as you said, can buy advertising, and they do. And it just depends on, it just depends on how much money they want to spend. Sometimes they'll spend a lot more money. And very often, that's on things like, like ballot issues. You know, people remember 30301, I think it was, a few years ago. It was a lot of money spent on both of those issues, both sides of them. So, but as far as slates of candidates, yeah, you'll get, you'll get groups that will want to endorse and, and spend money to get their, their message out about who they are endorsing.
Actually, I couldn't think of somebody better to answer that question than somebody who said you should go out and seek those endorsements. And let's turn it back to Angelique Espinoza. Angelique, what would you say to that?
Thanks for the question, Ed, that's a really good one. And, you know, that's, there's somewhat of a difference between what, what you think is, might be a great strategy and what you might, in your heart, feel like you want to do. And, you know, it is, it's a trade-off. If you go with a slate, and there are some Boulder organizations that do engage in elections, you are going to be able to have your own voice and your own message, but you might end up needing to emphasize a part of your message that you wouldn't otherwise. You might need to, in some other way, do a little bit of shifting so that your message sort of fits in with the slate and with the organization. It's, you know, it's, it's a little bit of a compromise. I have just, in my experience, seen that it's very hard to get enough traction to make it into that top five without one. So of course, it's a personal choice. But I would certainly recommend that you at least try to get that, to get those endorsements from, from, from those organizations.
And Angelique, for those people that are thinking like organizations, slates, who are these folks? Why don't you name some of the more well-known ones out there, and maybe even some of the smaller ones that have brought significant voters to, to the polls?
Sure, and I would encourage anyone who knows some that I might have missed to just pop them in the chat. So there's Better Boulder and Open Uh, so there's Better Boulder, uh, and Open Boulder, there's Boulder Progressives. Uh, there is Plan Boulder and uh Sierra Club, um, the Indian Peaks Group of Sierra Club. And.
Five dos.
Five, then there, yeah, then there are some groups that uh that make organizations, but they don't necessarily put the slates together. And those are, those are good ones to get to, so. Um, yeah, I don't even know who all of those folks are anymore, so, yeah.
You know, there's folks in the community too, the Boulder Co-op Housing folks. Um, former mayor Matt Applebaum loves writing up what he thinks every election and the candidates he endorses, former council members like making calls. Uh, there's all kinds of folks uh that will have candidate forums. It's a strange year. We're in a pandemic. Who knows if they'll be in person anymore? But in the past, places like Fraser Meadows, uh, senior living there, they've had forums. Um, the academy, other places like that, there's always big groups. So like Angelique said, get your name out there, keep your eyes open, engage, and um you'll find them and they'll find you. Uh, so two people that have had success that have structured their campaigns very strategically, that have reached out to voters and that have seen the results of being the top two vote getters, uh, over seventeen thousand votes each in the twenty nineteen election are here tonight. Those are uh saving council members, Junie Joseph and Bob Yates, and we're gonna hear from them. Uh, Junie and Bob, what did you do that was so successful? And after you talk on your experience, what's it really like when you get elected? Uh, so we'll start with Junie for a few minutes and then we'll go to Bob and then we're open for more questions to uh to Junie and Bob. Thank you for being here. And to this point, thank you to all our speakers. We're gonna continue to um allow each of them to answer questions, if any, come back for them. And um now we'll, we'll turn it over to Junie and Bob. Junie?
Thank you, Andrea, and it's a pleasure to be here with all of you. It is so exciting to see so many people on Zoom who are interested and are learning about this process. And as you know, my name is Junie Joseph and I'm on Boulder City Council. And um I moved to Boulder actually almost three years ago. And when I ran, I had only lived in Boulder for about a year. Less, slightly less than a year, but by the time the election comes, I had lived in Boulder for about a year. Um, but part of my experience, just so you know, I think there's something that a lot of people don't know about me is that I have two campaign cycles, actually. Uh, I worked on the twenty sixteen presidential election and I had also worked on a state campaign, one as an organizer and one just as a canvasser. So I had that experience to really help build me up. And that, I believe, was part of how I was able, because I had that type of institutional knowledge that I brought with me here to Boulder. But I think what really made me successful was the fact that I had a lot of people who believed in me. And I think uh the Chamber was really instrumental, actually. Uh, Better Boulder was instrumental to getting me on council and all the other groups that was mentioned. As far as whether I think they are a good idea, well, I think if you're a candidate and you want to win, I believe you have to look at it, what are you trying to do? If you're running for camp, for council and your hope is to win, you want to do those things that are, that will lead you there. And I believe in Boulder, being part of a slate will put you closer to that line. So I think uh that's something that you definitely have to um, you have to adopt, you have to adopt. I think what differentiate me from other candidate, and I think that's because of, again, my prior experience, and I didn't see a lot of the candidate do the same thing, but I thought that was very important to me. Um, I had this little elevator pitch and everyone knew that I was running on socioeconomic um diversity. And that was so important, just those little snippets. You know, people would say to me on the street, oh, you're the girl who's running on socioeconomic diversity. So I think it's so important to have that, just a hook, something that you can be reminded for or by. It doesn't have to be long, but it distinguishes you from other people, especially uh I think as well, of course, I mean, if we're being honest on this Zoom, being black, being a student, all these things distinguished me. But let's say if you are to, you are a white candidate, you are more likely to be, I guess, similar to everyone else. More reasons to have this little slogan that says, you know, hey, uh, this person is running. Um, I think Gala is on the call as well, and I remember she was running on the single-use plastic, so that stick with me. And I thought that was brilliant. Of course, um, it didn't get enough traction. Um, but I think to me, that was very smart. Um, some candidate, some candidates are better known than others, that's for sure. Um, I was not known at all. So I tried to get as many um, as many endorsements. And I think I, I, I I believe I almost got all of them except for Plan Boulder. Um, and I was lucky to get some, you know, some, so, you know, it, it was very cross-sectional, the people who supported me. So I think it's very important to do that. And um, and I'm sure because some people are better known and they didn't have to do as much work. But even if you are, you have a slate who endorsed you or that endorsed you, I still think you have to do a lot of work. You know, you have to go out there, you know, you can't just leave it on them. I was at the Target at seven o'clock in the morning or when they opened. I don't remember the exact timing. And I would come there back in the afternoon and people would say, oh, my God, you're back again. So I would do that. Uh, and that's because of my experience. And I know uh most of the candidates didn't do that. So um public engagement, I think, is very important. Uh, for me, I started sitting on council meetings almost a year before. I sat there and I listened and just to know what the issues were, right? I think some of us may think, okay, I'm going to run and I'm gonna run on my own idea. I don't think you're running for yourself, you're running for the community, so you need to know what the community find, you know, the things that are important to the community. So it's not just about the solutions that you want to bring, but you need to know that the solutions are solutions that people care about. So sit on council. You don't have to do it like me. I've done it, you know, just sit there, um, just listening to the different issues. You can do that. Um, find the local activist as well. I have to say, um, Boulder Progressive were really instrumental as well to me getting on council. They were, they were there, you know, just meeting with them, finding out, you know, what, what is it that that are important to the community. And believe it or not, these activist groups, they are, they are, they are the eyes and ears of the people because they're so vocal. They, you know, because people are working, so they, they know what's going on in the community. So find these activist groups and get connected with them. And also, if you're really serious about council, you should already know who's endorsing and who are the people in the community who are the connectors. I've read a book, there are people in the, in this community of Boulder who knows every other person. You need to find that person. I see one of my friends here, uh, Paul Cure. I believe Paul Cure is a networker, connector. So reach out to people who can connect you to other people as well. You can't run a, a campaign by yourself. You need support, so reach out to as many people as you can. Uh, I think I'm coming close to my seven minutes, two more minutes. Um, now on council, when I get on council, by the way, I didn't expect to get on council. I was, I was very surprised. So I'm very lucky as well, as much work as I put on in, into it. I wasn't sure that I wasn't, I was gonna get on council, but I was very happy. I'm still happy with being on council. I find the work very enjoyable. Can it be stressful? Yes. Have I gotten frustrated? Yes. But I still love it. I love it very much. I'm very grateful to be on council. Um, you know, but of course, there are duties, for instance, there are times I feel that I have, I'm doing administrative work as well. But that's part of the job, right? Because, and again, that's why it's so important to speak with council members now to know what the job is like, but chances are you're not gonna really know until you're there, right? Because I think it's very hard to explain. For instance, me and Bob, we're on the same, we're on the police master plan. Um, together, subcommittee together. And when I ran for council, that was not part of my, that's not what, that was not part of the work that I think I wanted to do on council, making the police department better or contributing, contributing to that. But here I am doing that kind of work. So there's more to just running for council and making changes. There is a lot of, and also there's opportunities to um, for, you know, state and national um advocacy. And that I find that very interesting because of my work with the UN and being in DC as well. I really enjoy that because it takes you, i- it gives you a different perspective on how, on the surface that you do. And so again, there are so many different opportunities. Is it the work that you wanna do? And I think a challenge that I face being on council is um being a working-class person, being a working person. It's very hard, but it is doable, right? It's a sacrifice. And you have to ask yourself, okay, can I sacrifice? Um, for instance, last week I had a six-hour committee meeting, one week, just one committee that I, that I, that I was on, six hours. Can you devote six hours? So you got, you might start thinking now, how do I shift my schedule? Let me find a job that is more um, you know, that will complement being on council. So these are the things that you need to start thinking now before you get on council.
Um, you, thank you, Junie. Uh, that was great. I mean, great overview, great personal experience, great journey to get there. And uh, great eye-opening reality of what it's like. So somebody else who's there with you is Bobby Yates. We have Bob here today. Um, we'll go ahead and spotlight Bob as a speaker. Bob, what was your experience like? How, how did you successfully get elected twice? And uh, what, what keeps you going on Tuesday nights and in between?
Uh, well, first of all, I'm, I'm gonna say, um, I'm always gonna be honest with you. So I'm gonna say that uh, I'm really, really happy that I'm not running in November. Uh, because like Junie, I love the job, um, but I'm running for council is a real pain in the butt. Um, and uh, anyone who tells you it's a wonderful, enriching experience is probably lying to you. It's about three months of absolute misery. And the only advantage uh to it is, is there's a whole bunch of people who are suffering through that misery with you. Um, but um, if you get through it and you get elected, um, it's uh city councils is the best job you can ever have. So it is worth it. Um, but um, uh, it's, it's, it's tough and it's, it's humbling and it's annoying and it's frustrating. And uh, uh, so we're trying to give you um some tips on how to get through that really difficult um, uh, time in um the late summer and early fall. Um, I'm gonna try to disagree with some of the other speakers, uh, just to make it things a little interesting. Um, first of all, uh, well, first, first thing I'm gonna do is just, I agree. Your absolute best friend in the campaign season is Diane Marshall. Stay close to Diane. Ask her questions. Um, you can't screw up if you ask any questions. She gives, she answers. Number one, she always knows the right answer. And number two, don't guess, just like Diane tell you the answer and then do what she tells you to do. Um, so um, she's very easy to reach. She always has the right answer. And if you have any doubt whatsoever about what counts or what doesn't count or how to file the form, just ask Diane. Um, a couple of people have mentioned slates. I, I guess we probably should define our term here. There certainly are groups that endorse candidates. Um, some groups probably have longer history and better track record than other groups. And then uh, and then sometimes it's used so honestly with slates, and I'm not sure that's necessarily synonymous, because sometimes groups will uh endorse one uh set of people and then another group will overlap with that a little bit. Um, I, I agree with Ed Byrne. I'm not sure that slates are such a good thing. I'm not sure they're absolutely essential now. The, the track record has been those who have been, have run, you know, in companionship with four or five other people and have been endorsed by similar groups with similar philosophies have done better. That's certainly true. Um, but I, I think you need to be yourself. And I think um, you will, over the course of the campaign, naturally gravitate to people whose philosophies are similar to yours. But I wouldn't get really hung up now in May or June or July about figuring out who your slate is. I think you, you need to figure out who you are and run as you are. And it'll, you'll naturally gravitate towards people who are like-minded. Um, um, the daily camera endorsement, while it's nice, is not, not essential. I was not endorsed by the Daily Camera in two thousand fifteen and I was still the top vote getter. So, um, Al, I did okay without you. Um, but apparently did an okay job, um, because in two thousand nineteen I did get endorsed by the Daily Camera. So if you don't get endorsed by the Daily Camera, don't drop out, don't quit. Life's not over. Um, Daily Camera's track record is about no, no better from an endorsement standpoint than any of the other groups. Everyone's got about a fifty to sixty percent track record. So if uh Group A endorses you and Group B doesn't, you're fine. If the Daily Camera doesn't endorse you, that's okay. Um, you know, this is a numbers game, right? You gotta get about ten to twelve thousand people to vote for you. You know, there's gonna be somewhere between fifteen and twenty-five people running for council and, and, and as been said, top vote will get us get elected. And historically, that requires um about ten to twelve thousand votes. If it's a really um large field, I think when I ran in two thousand fifteen, there was twenty or twenty-one people running. I think it was only eight thousand people to make the cutoff. Jan Burton was the fifth place vote getter. I think she had eight thousand votes. Um, uh, but kind of ten to twelve. Now, most of us don't know ten to twelve thousand people. And so um what you have to do is, has been said by other speakers, is get endorsements. Go to the people you know, and then it's just concentric circles out from there. People you maybe know a little bit less, a little bit less. And of course, you can ask each of your endorsers to, to introduce you to more people. And the idea is to get dozens and dozens, actually preferably hundreds and hundreds of endorsements. And what are you gonna do with those endorsements? Well, first of all, presumably those people will vote for you. So you're well on your way to your ten thousand votes. Secondly, um, you can list their names with their permission on your website and maybe even some nice quotes from, from them. One of the um, uh, one of the, the best quotes I, I got was from a rabbi who says, by gates is a mensch. And I thought, oh, wow, what a wonderful compliment. Um, so whatever nice things they say about you, you can put up on the website or put in a daily camera ad. Um, you can get them to write letters to the editor uh for you or or op-eds. You can list their names in your collateral materials. And then most importantly, you're gonna ask them when it comes, when the ballots drop in mid-October and it comes time for voting, you're gonna ask all of those people endorsed you to go out and find ten people to vote for you. And if you get enough endorsements, you can do the math there and you can get, uh, you get what you need. I do agree with the comment about door-to-door. I think that's super important. When I, I've gone door-to-door, both on my first election, I went out to um, just to remember, one thousand four hundred and five doors. Um, and my second one, uh, since I was incumbent, I was a little lazier. I only went to a thousand doors. Um, but when I went back and looked at the precincts that I walked, and I just picked the precincts arbitrarily, and I tried to have a diversity of precincts in different geographies in town. When I went back after the election and looked at the, at the vote count in the precincts that I walked, over difference. Angelique is absolutely right. Um, uh, seeing somebody in person is, is almost a guaranteed vote unless you just completely dribble on yourself. Um, and so go door-to-door, it's a real pain in the butt. It takes, it's, it's mentally exhausting, it's physically exhausting. Go only to the households that vote. Don't go to every single door. Get a list of the people that vote frequently. They're easily, easy to obtain. And just go to those second or third houses. Um, uh, it's, it's really, really not fun, but it's super, super important, and that's the best way to get votes. Um, we talked a little bit about money. I, I, some of you probably, if you haven't run before, might be a little intimidated about raising money. Um, raising money is actually really easy. It's the spending the money that's hard, because if you take matching funds, and quite frankly, even if you don't take matching funds, you're gonna be effectively limited to that twenty-one thousand dollars that Diane mentioned. Um, twenty-one thousand dollars is not very much money. It's a great law and the hundred dollar limit is great, the twenty-one thousand dollar limit is great. But it's really, really tough to allocate twenty-one thousand dollars. You'll raise the money right away. Don't worry about that. What's, what's really tough is to figure out how to spend that twenty-one thousand dollars effectively. Do you do mailing? Do you advertise in the Boulder Weekly or the Daily Camera? Do you use social media? Because you will run out of that money really, really fast if you don't budget ahead of time. And the best way to budget is know your, know your audience. If you think your audience is younger, you might spend more money on social media. If your audience is older, you might spend more money on the Daily Camera. Uh, imagine the typical voter that might vote for you and spend money in a way that will access those people. Um, get coaches. I think um, Angelique mentioned the kitchen cabinet. In particular, I would suggest two coaches. One is your speaking coach and one is your writing coach. You will be asked to um fill out uh an uncomfortably large number of questionnaires um that take, will take you hours and hours and hours and hours to fill out. And of course, everyone asks different questions. Every special interest group will ask different questions. And so you need somebody to help you write. You, you start to be yourself. You start to write your, your uh position. But then you need somebody to prove that for you to make sure you're making sense. Um, and you know, I mean, typos. Um, Susie Agitton was my proofreader in my first um thing. And uh, you need to find somebody who's brutally honest with you. And so Susie would say, Bob, you're full of yourself, or Bob, this makes no sense whatsoever. You want somebody like that, we'll be honest with you. My speaking coach, when I did give my practice for debates, was um my, my wife, Katie, who um has no problem telling me, Bob, you're mumbling. Bob, you're going too fast. Bob, you make no sense. So you want somebody who is brutally honest, both in your writing and your speaking. So as you prepare for this campaign, particularly in September and October. And the final comment I'll make um is be yourself. Um, you know, if you have something you feel very passionately about and you're pretty certain about, and this is a non-negotiable for you, um, go ahead and say that. That's perfectly fine. Um, but don't feel like you have to answer every question that everyone poses. Sometimes you will simply not know the answer. And if you try to make it up, people will figure that out. They'll figure out, you don't know what you're talking about. It's perfectly fine to say, I don't know, I'm still learning. This is an issue I haven't really focused on. I've been on council now for almost six years, but I'm still learning. Um, and so no one knows everything, and it's perfectly fine to say, these are the things that I really believe in, and these are the things I'm still learning about. Um, I think at the end of the day, uh, voters don't vote on positions. I think they vote on character. And your best, um, the best, your best course of action is put yourself out there. Be yourself. Be the wonderful, nice, um, warm, kind person that you are. And voters will see that and they can look, care less about what you say and how you say it.
All right. Thank you, Bob. And um, you know, great glimpse into uh, what it's like to be a council person tackling tons of. Uh, really difficult, hard issues. And sometimes it's okay to not know everything about it, but it's what kind of decisions do you make? On behalf of the community. Um, I'd like to go back to the gallery view if um. You hit the right hand button in your Zoom screen, you could see everybody and ask if there's any questions for either Junie or Bob. And go ahead and do the raise hand function. We have about forty-five people on here, so I can't see everybody if, if you're waving. But I have a question, Bob, um, and Junie. Um, I recently watched a board uh, commission meeting. And there was a really hard controversial issue. And so some of the members, because there wasn't consensus. Uh, thought about passing on the issue or waiting till there's more. What do you do if you're elected, elected by the community, uh, once you get the job with a really tough issue like that? What do you do in your face on having to make a decision?
Can you go ahead?
Sorry, Bob. I thought you were going to answer. Yes, um. When it comes to hard decisions, a lot of times what end up happening or contentious uh, issues, right? A lot of times we get a lot of council questions. We, we got a lot of council uh, emails. For me, I listen, I read those emails, and sometimes I feel strongly about certain issues as well. And I have an answer. I think, okay, that's, this is how I'm gonna answer. This is how I'm going to vote. And then I'll read those comments and I might become less sure. And thinking, okay, I can go either way. And then I got on council. I'll listen to Bob. I'll listen to Rachel, Mary, and all my other council members. And based on the discussion in the room, I go either way because. The thing about being on council, I come, I, 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 I run council based on the values, right? And people put me there because they know Junie is the person who will vote on this particular issue. But what ended up happening is, once you're on council. That one issue you might think that is really big may not be so big anymore. It might be one of thirty different issues. And it might even be even a smaller than the top ten issues. So you're on council and there is a budget. And you're looking at the budget and I've talked, whether it's with Bob, who's been on council six years and I've only been there one year. Or I've also talked with staff and, and, and after having that discussion, I'll decide, okay. Maybe I need to, to not take the position that I think is best, but rather follow council or the community.
Yeah, that's a good answer, Junie. I, I think um, I think there's a, a tension between representation and leadership. Um, and sometimes um, you're, well, of course, we're always listening to the community, but sometimes you're listening to the community and counting um, noses. You're, you're, you're saying, geez, a hundred people said they want me to do this and, and no one said they don't want me to do this. That seems to be the community sentiment. Whether I agree with it or I disagree with it, that seems to be where the community value is. And that's perfectly fine. That's representation. But sometimes you um, you have to exert leadership. And sometimes you have to um, lead people in places that they may not be ready to go. And sometimes you have to make decisions that are unpopular. Junie and I had to make a very unpopular decision on Tuesday night. Um, and um, you have to have thick skin when you do this, because people are gonna be angry with you. They're gonna be angry with you before you make a decision. They're gonna be angry with you with, after you make a decision. Um, and you know, when you get up there in the dais and after you've finished listening to everyone who waves in. Um, um, it really comes down to you and your colleagues, right? You and your colleagues to sort that out, to listen to each other, to be persuaded by each other. Um, to find compromises. Um, we have a great mayor right now, Sam Weaver, really brings us together. And we've had so many unanimous votes. Not because we go, walked into the meeting agreeing with each other. But because we listened to each other and he encouraged, he's a bridge builder and he's, he's encouraged us to, to find compromises and find middle ground. And I think that's a really, really healthy thing. There was an editorial not written by the current editorial page editor, editorial written a few years ago by the editorial page editor. Who's, who was bemoaning the fact that there were so many unanimous decisions. And I completely disagreed with that. I think um, if you get council getting together and finding a common ground, I think that signals to the community. Um, that, that all their voices were heard and we, we came together and found a solution.
Okay, I'm gonna ask a question. Just, I, I, you know, Junie touched on it. Um, relative to weighing work versus city council. But you know, there's a number of prospective council candidates here. And they're probably weighing, you know, what is this role look like? So maybe if you guys can tell us. How much time and effort is it that you have to commit to doing a good job um, in the job, in the role of city council?
I'll, I'll go first. Uh, how much time it takes is all of the extra time that you have. If you have uh, ten hours a week extra in addition to your job or your family, then it's gonna take ten hours. If you've got thirty hours a week, it will gobble up thirty hours. If you've got fifty hours a week and you're blessed to be retired like I am, it'll take fifty hours. It will take all of the time that you um, don't uh, wring off for other things in your life that are important, like your job and your family. Um, so um, it's a lot. Um, anyone, anyone on here who's thinking about running for council thinks that it's, it's pretty much just Tuesday nights. Um, would be totally mistaken. It's a lot more than Tuesday nights. Um, it's, it's a seven day a week job. You answer emails seven days a week. You get phone calls seven days a week. People corner you in Safeway. Um, you serve on at least a half a dozen to a dozen committees, um, each of which meet um, you know, monthly or, or even more frequently. And so it takes a lot of time. Um, but it takes the, the amount of time that you want to give it. Uh, Junie, what, what, what do you think?
Yeah, no, thank you, Bob. I think you're right, actually. Um, council takes a lot of time. And again, as I mentioned, if you're a working class person and you want to do this. It's going to take a sacrifice. So you need to start strategizing now. Um, whether you need to go part-time at your job so that you can give council the time and attention. Because for me, the committees are really about not just contributing, but also learning how to be effective on the job. Um, right now, I just recently graduated from law school. So I have plenty of time because I haven't, you know, starting my law career. So I have plenty of time like Bob as well. So I am on several federal advocacy committees and I'm also in regional committees. And I believe I'm closer to maybe ten, if not more, subcommittees. And each of these committees are about three hours um, per week. So you're thinking thirty hours plus council. So it's a lot of times. It's a lot, a lot of time. But I think you can do it. Because again, it's about how, how you want to contribute to council, because I never. I didn't want to get on council and not do the work of the people. I want to be effective. I wanna do a good job. I'm a conscientious person. So I, I, I do this committee work so that I can be better prepared, so that I can bring questions to council. So that I can, for instance, I attended the League of, the National League of Cities just recently in February. When the, when that conference was over, it was on Zoom. Um, I reached out to the, to the city, to the interim city manager and say, hey, here's what I heard during that meeting. How we, how we uh, on this, this particular policy issue as a council or as a city, what can we do? So there's a lot to be done on council. So I really honestly believe it would be hard. Um, to be on council and have a forty hours nine to five job. Because as Bob mentioned, if you just show up on council just on Tuesday night, it's going to be hard for you. And I remember um, there's something, I believe, one of the, one of our council members said, I, I, I think, I'm thinking it might even be Bob is. Uh, he said something, well, joining a committee is about supporting the team. It's about contributing to the work of council. So if there is maybe, I believe, twenty different committees, you don't want to be that council member who says, well, I can only be here on Tuesday nights. So you want to contribute. You want to be part of that process. So I think again, it's about strategizing and ensuring, let's say, if you work forty hours a week. Figure it out differently so that you can also contribute to the work of the people who elected you.
You know, that's great advice and a great dose of reality of, you know, just how, how encompassing it is and. And what it's like to run. Um, you know, right now we have an opportunity to open it up uh, to anybody. Any questions you may have to any of the folks that presented tonight, you have them here. This is your opportunity to ask them anything, anything you'd like. Um, go ahead and do the race hand function or um, wave, and then we'll go ahead and uh, give you that chance. All right, to end on a positive note, Bob, Junie, what's the absolute best thing that he's either happening on council or about being on council?
I believe Brooke has her hands raised.
Oh, I didn't see that. I'm sorry. Uh, Brooke, go ahead. Sorry about that.
So we talked about knocking on doors and sort of the, the old high-touch type of campaigning. What do you all think about social media and how much of an impact did it have on your campaigns in twenty nineteen?
I'll go on on that first. Um, I, I made a conscious decision. That um, the, the voters I was probably going to appeal to, because I'm an older person and because many of the people I knew were older. Um, that uh, I was probably not gonna get as much bang for the buck or, or, or even time. Uh, social media as I was and I guess more historic or traditional forms of media. Um, in my first campaign, I did have a young woman who was an intern to me, who managed social media for me and did some postings. On the second campaign, I didn't even do that. Um, I think if you're a, a person whose audience is gonna be focused on social media, absolutely. It's really, really important. Um, but that's not necessarily an all be all. Um, some people don't do any social media and they do just fine and they win. Some people spend a lot of time on social media and they don't win. So I think you need, just need to know your audience, Brooke.
To answer that question, Brooke, I think really you have to know the type of candidate that you are. And there's a big contrast between me and Bob. And he just mentioned, you know, being older, but. I think part of it as well, Bobby's well-known in the community. He's an incumbent when he ran, when we ran in the same year. And I was brand new into the community. And for me, I did everything. If someone say, Junie, you need to go speak to this person and meet for coffee, I was there. If they said, reach out to this person on Twitter or on. On, on Facebook, I did it. So knowing that if you're not a well-known candidate, the more you do, the better it, it is for. For you to get elected. You need to get in front of voters. And I know Bob mentioned audience. When you're brand new, you don't really know who's your audience, really. I mean, you have an idea, right? Because I was on the things based on your values. You kind of have an idea. But don't look at it this way, because I remember when I was knocking on doors, I went knocking on door with um, with a woman and she said to me. We're going to skip this door, because we, I know the value of these people who live here. And it was not the slate that endorsed me. So it was a different slate. And I thought that was weird, because I, I thought, for me, I believe if I showed up, for some reason, I don't know. I just believe that once you talk to me, you'll change your mind. So I just go and knock on that door. So if I were you, I would not leave a stone unturned. I would do everything that it takes. I would reach out on social media. I did social media. I did Facebook. And it's very time consuming, because you have to enter your EIN number. It has to be a campaign page. It cannot just be you sending out social media. There's a difference there. And it's paid media and I did it. And I think it was very effective for me, because there were people who will. When I first started, I didn't really understand the audience I was trying to reach. So I ended up doing it more the state. And there were people from other communities who would, you know, even message on Facebook and say, why am I seeing this ad from you? We're not in your community. But somehow it helped, because again, the thing about people is so interesting, right? About even whether you're knocking on doors or you're on Facebook, it's the connections. If you talk to one person, they'll talk to another person. And it's the same thing on Facebook as well. People would just share my, my, my messages. So you just have to make sure you just communicate and engage, just stay engaged. And I think the more engaged you are, the closer you will be to being elected.
Excellent. Thank you, um, Junie, and thank you, Bob. And um, actually, right now, we're up against time. So thank you to all our speakers tonight. Thank you to all of you for, for coming and engaging in this. This is really the kickoff to the election season. This is where it all starts. This is where you all find out how to go about it. Um, ton of information and those folks that spoke tonight. Um, from the city clerk's office to Angelique Espinoza, to, to the Daily Camera folks, um, Junie and Bob, they're all here in the community. Please feel free to reach out to them. And please feel free to reach out to us at the Boulder Chamber, myself, John Tare, Lori Call. Uh, any of us, our colleague Scott Sternberg in the Boulder Economic Council. We're here to talk to you about the business community. We're here to engage with you. We want to see people get engaged in the process. And um, contribute to this democracy. And with the last words, I turn it over to John Tare, uh, President, CEO of the Boulder Chamber.
Yeah, it's Andrea. Uh, and I just echo the appreciation um, from Andrea for the speakers and then all of you for being a part of this. I just, a couple of things to say. So first of all, um, just what is the Boulder Chamber's role in the election? Also, just, I'm gonna speak to the passion uh, comment and then just a little bit of appreciation. So. First of all, just so you uh, get a sense, the Boulder Chamber does not endorse candidates. Um, why? Because we want to ultimately work very closely with all the candidates um, who ultimately assume a role on city council. So just know that that's not a function that we play, but instead we are an information resource. So we will be reaching out to all of you, connecting with you and wanting to make sure that we understand where you're coming from, how we can support you. And understanding the needs of the business community, as well as making sure that we are helping you understand the lay of the land. Um, whether or not it's necessarily um, from our perspective. So. We hope to be an information resource for the community, but also for the candidates. Um, and then just to speak to passion, um, you know, I salute all the folks who are on the call here, who are thinking about running for council. Or who are thinking about supporting the council candidates. And I think Bob, Junie, and even Angelique spoke very well to um, the commitment that it is to take on this role. Um, it is enormous. Um, and so I, if there's any message that I would have from myself engaged in the work of the city. It is, you have to have passion. All of these folks who spoke on these issues tonight, they have passion for our community. And making it better always and thinking about what's best for our future. Um, and that takes hard work to drive forward that message and to ultimately drive policy in the direction that, that supports that vision. So um, absolutely check yourself when you're thinking about running for council. Do you have that passion for taking on the role of a city council candidate and ultimately serving in the city council role? Um, and then finally, um, appreciation. Um, again, the thank you for those who spoke tonight. But all of you who are taking the time to even consider whether or not to assume this role. Uh, we love this community. Boulder Chamber is about building community through business and. Part of that work is our partnership with the elected officials and the city staff team. Um, that drive home all of the important work that keep our city going strong. So. Just great appreciation for all of you even taking the time to consider what role you would play. And uh, with that, I hand it back to Andrea to, to close us down. Thank you.
That's it. Big thanks to everybody for being here tonight. Enjoy the rest of your Thursday and um, we'll see you out there on the K. Well, I was on mute. I just said a big thanks to everybody for being here tonight and uh, enjoy the rest of your Thursday. And we'll see out there on the campaign trail if, if you decide to run.